Got it. Any declarations of conflict of interest?
No, but I just want to advise, if I haven't before, I'm no longer on the Electoral Commission. My time Audit and Risk Committee, my time, my term couldn't be extended. And that's off yesterday, the same with the Victorian Ombudsman. Oh, okay.
Got a clean out?
Yeah, and I'm now on Crime Stop, I've got a thing I told you about last night.
Two minutes, yeah. Laurie, anything from you?
I'm on the one of Ruwa people's land, that's what I've got, nothing else to add.
Thanks, Pete.
No, nothing, thanks.
Just for me, I'm still a director of Statewide Super. They're just the, the shell company at the moment, while that is, but it's still being wrapped up with Post Plus. So that's more in relation to item two point one, but there's no conflict then, there's no assets in that company. All right, given we will meet.
Is it appropriate for me to raise that we will be raising a matter in the confidential items of the agenda? That Pat, we think that you will have a conflict of interest in, or not think you will, in the context of your role with the, as Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee of the Local Government Association. So we won't mention anything as to theories at all until you've left the meeting.
And we'll deal with that conflict at the start, just to reaffirm that?
Yes.
Yep. All right, and if maybe we'll bring you in. Okay, we've got a private session with the external auditors leading into two point one. Anybody else looking for anything of a confidential nature? No? Okay. We've got the minutes of the twenty ninth, they were issued to everybody, well in advance, which is good. Anything from anybody in relation to those minutes? Got shapes of the head. Okay, we'll go to the resolution on page four. Do I have a mover? Thanks Laurie, thanks Peter, all those in favour. Okay, that one's passed. We'll go to one point five. Cathy, I'll go over to you just to, if you want to capture anything in relation to the update.
No, take it as read. We, due to resourcing issues et cetera, we have actually deferred a number of the items that were going to be on this extensive agenda. But they will come through to the next meeting in more full detail.
Thank you. Laurie?
No.
Pete?
No.
Pat?
Just a childcare centre review, what's the revised timeframe now?
We still need to work that through. There's quite a lot happening in Wayala at the moment. And so we just haven't had the resources to put towards it at this point in time. But we will, we will come back with a summary of the next steps, actions and the timeframes.
Okay, anything else, Pat?
No.
Just leading on from that one, what I want to do when we have our, either our meeting in November or February, in confidence, just talk through where we're up to with all of the service reviews, the delivery of those reviews by the external party, and management's ability to deal with the review and actually the issues that sit there. So do we have the capability and capacity and the quality of what we're receiving from BDO as well? So, and I want to take that in confidence, given the matters that sit within that. But I think we need to have a deep discussion in relation to, are we getting value out of that matter? And I'll talk that through with Cathy, so that's no surprise to Cathy.
And through the Chair, Grant and I met with them yesterday as well on another project that they're doing. And the, and the tenure of that conversation, or the tenure of that conversation has reinforced even further for me that we need to do something about that contract.
Yep, the other piece is Cathy sent out a copy of the HR policies. Cathy and I did have a chat. I raised things in relation to things like redundancy policy, director and executive travel, working health and safety, an overarching policy, as well as remuneration for CEO and executives, and just a general people and culture policy. Cathy ran me through why some of those would not sit at a council level, given they are sitting in legislation. That's another matter I'd like just to talk through when we go in confidence in November or February, in relation to some of those matters, particularly around the redundancy side. And the other piece, Cathy sent out a copy of the corporate credit card procedure to us as well for information. My only feedback to Cathy on that was potentially for the CEO expenditure, having a two key approach being Cathy for the Director of Corporate plus the Mayor as the sign off. Seeing that in other organisations, that takes any coercion or pressure to approve, and any conflict in transparency as well. So that's just something for Cathy to consider.
And if I can again, through the Chair, just elaborate on that, we do do that already. But it is informal, it's not actually embedded in policy, and so we can embed it in policy.
Okay, yeah, and just that item six, I note that management are saying they don't need a close off public security report. If we could have a close off report just on those items that we talked about, just a one pager, and then we can close that off. All right, we have a resolution now on page fourteen. Can I have a mover? Thanks Tat, seconded, thanks Laurie, all those in favour. Okay, we've got a busy schedule.
Sorry, Grant, could I just ask one question? Sorry, just in, just in regards to the business continuity plan? So that's obviously been going on for quite some time now, over a year or so. And I'm just curious, do we have like a fallback plan that we could utilise at the moment, prior to obviously this new one getting ratified?
Thanks, Pete.
Yes, we do have an existing business continuity plan, and that is in place and has been reviewed and has been updated by all of the business units. What is not in place is a scenario testing schedule, so that we can test that business continuity plan on an ongoing basis. And it's the schedule, the testing schedule, which will come through to the Audit and Risk Committee. But given the lapse of time between the Audit and Risk Committee's review of that business continuity plan, that whole full plan will come back to the committee when it comes through in either November or February.
Thanks Cathy.
All right, I want to vary the agenda, because I think there was a sequencing before we deal with two point one. So Cathy, do I need a resolution to vary the agenda? Just vary it?
You can just vary it, but we'll document in the minutes, the variation.
Okay, so what we're going to do first is two point two. So this will round out management's reporting to the council on the financial results for twenty three, twenty four. So we're on page one oh four. Grant, can I hand over to you please to just talk us through that?
Yeah, certainly can. So obviously when looking at our overall financial results, it's quite different to our adopted budget. So we'll start with the main item. So there's a six, obviously there's a six point eight million dollar overall difference between end result and the adopted budget. So five point six million of that is purely a timing difference with the FA grants that we received from the federal government. So almost by accident, they fixed the timing this year. So it'll be interesting to see how we go in future years. So a result that probably worked well for how, what they want to do, where they sort of manipulate their, their financial result by paying out the grants in advance on a cash basis. They paid it on the final day of the year, but too late in the afternoon for the LGFA to get the payments out. So it was actually held in trust by the LGFA at the end of June and paid to us on the first of July. So it worked well for us, because now we'll go back to the proper timing of the grants, and worked well for the federal government, because they can still manipulate their financial position. So we'll see if they actually continue with that in the future. I mean, getting paid on the first, we've, the LGA has actually made it clear to the federal government that, look, if they're paying it in advance for cash flow reasons, we'd like it paid in the first week of July. Paying it in the last week of June actually causes more annoyance than anything, because it does, you know, make our financial results look weird. However, the adjusted financial result takes into account that five point six million, and so removes that from the, from our overall adjusted result. So overall, we've had a one point one million dollar sort of result, underlying change in our results, taking out timing differences. And the three key items that make up that are, the first one is waste, which had about a four fifty thousand dollar impact since the adopted budget. So waste has been a bit of a cost pressure over the last few years. Internally, so work is being done to bring, to divert more waste to green. We have quite a high contamination rate in the city in terms of the amount of green waste going in red bins. So through education programmes or bin audits and other methods, we are looking long term to push that cost down. We're starting to see a few percentage points change, but we need more. And we're also going to undertake a review of our sort of hard waste and illegal waste contracts, that being, so there's two parts to that, four fifty, there's the curbside waste increases from tonnages, but there's also an increase in tonnages of illegal and hard waste. But it's likely, so even though we're working on reviewing those contracts to bring costs down, it's likely that some of our waste costs are sort of ongoing cost pressures that will continue. So because one of the things we've got is that illegal dumping increase, where we're trying to push that across is to hard waste, which is a cheaper option. But still, we have to pay for the tonnages that are being dumped, so that's a cost cancel. So where we are going to have to divert some resources into waste, and I've mentioned in the, I've got some areas we've looked at to increase that budget ongoing, to stop that being an ongoing pressure, as it has been over the last few years. The second item is airport income, which has also been a pressure over the last few years. But I guess this is the year now, with RECs leaving the market, it has changed our trajectory of passenger numbers. So we were still in our, I guess, post-COVID recovery. And if you look at all the figures up to the end of twenty three, twenty two, twenty three, we were still on that upward trend back towards that range of sort of seventy to eighty thousand passengers. With RECs leaving, we've actually seen a reversal of that trend, and actually a drop of ten thousand passengers from twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four. And so we've had, yeah, it's had a big impact on our airport income. Noting that we will be discussing the airport business plan for the runway on this agenda. And what that business plan now includes is, we worked hard to bring in some more realistic passenger numbers based on now what our current circumstances are, and looking at what our pricing needs to be long term with Qantas to make that work. So yeah, I guess the work on the business plan is working on addressing that one. And the other big, our depreciation, so we're the threat of fifteen thousand dollar increase in our sort of buildings and infrastructure depreciation. We did discuss that earlier in the year, that was due to higher unit rate increases at the end thirty June twenty twenty three flowing through. As we discussed then, we have got some assumptions in our plan around moderation in capital prices over sort of a four to five year period. We are actually starting to see some evidence of that. So some of our indexes we use to track capital prices are actually starting to push down. And we did have some discussion with Tonkin, that for some councils, they're starting to see negative unit rates for particularly transport asset class, which tends to be the biggest asset class for most councils. Offsetting that is the, obviously you'll see in the budget review item is the anomaly, I guess, of stormwater assets. And what they've done at the thirtieth of June this year, there's been some, some really crazy changes, I guess, in unit rates for concrete piping, stormwater piping, which has affected that. So whether, you know, we'll have to track that over the next year or two, as to whether that's a bit of an anomaly that will also moderate, or whether there's something unusual going on in that market. So we've committed with Tonkin to, when we do our desktop asset review hours at the end of each year, which we normally use a set index for, we'll sort of separately especially look at stormwater and see if there's any downward moderation. I guess the thing with depreciation, we do have a bit of time, you know, it's a non-cash item, and we do have a bit of time over a couple of years to adjust to depreciation changes. We do need to fund depreciation completely in the long term. But when we get jumps like that, you know, I don't think councils should be making rash decisions of rate increases to cover it. But we do need to work out how we're going to fund it in the longer term. So yeah, hopefully that moderation we're seeing in other asset, especially in transport, spreads across other asset classes. That's sort of correction post-COVID. There were some other one-off items in there, there's, I mean, there's always a lot we're dealing with budget wise. But the, I guess the other big items that were one-off was, we had some quite big legal costs come through for a number of cases this year. So they increased by about a hundred and eighty. The leisure centre closure for major capital works caused an operating impact of a hundred and fifty thousand due to the way that contract works and the fact that it's based on the operator making income at all times. And we had some weird stuff happen with our electricity costs in terms of adjustments from previous years with Origin. But I mean, we're always going to have ones like that, and there, the item, we have, we've tried this year to build more capacity into the budget using, we did have an uplift in our, you know, operating FA grants last year that have flown through. So we've used that to sort of increase the capacity in the budget, taking out some of those vacant position, lowering the vacant position allowances, that sort of thing, to give council capacity to deal with the one-offs that will always come along in dealing with a budget of our complexity and size across a lot of business units. So I guess that's the key breakdown of where we're at. Yeah, of the financial result.
Pretty comprehensive, thank you for that, Grant. Just one thing you, when these go to council, when we go to page one hundred and ten, I think it'll be worthwhile on the council and council excluding airport, is to put the operating surplus and deficit.
Without the adjustment?
Yeah, that's what we did before.
Yep, okay, yep, no.
And so keep what you've got, just add in that first line, because that then gives you the context that the only variance is that five point six million dollars, which is purely recalibration or timing of that one as well. That's where I got a little bit confused.
Okay, no, that's all right.
The, just on that, so with, I think last year, they also made a prepayment of a quarter as well. So we had not only a payment of in advance, but a payment of a quarter.
It was a whole year. It was a, so what happened was they, they, it was, they paid an extra quarter last year, but they got to the point where they'd actually paid a hundred percent in advance, so they couldn't go any further. So now, because of the, whether it was on accident, by accident or on purpose, they have now paid zero in advance, so that's the five point six million.
So that's fixed everything.
That's fixed everything, and then they paid eighty percent of the grant on the first of July. So it'll be interesting to see at the end of this year whether they go back to, whether that was an accident and they pay it a day earlier and we go back to having a distorted result, or whether they realise that that's actually a really good outcome for councils, that does what they want and what we want, and they do that again. They do seem, yeah, keen to always pay some amount in advance, until they, they'll get to a year where they don't want to pay anything, because they'll manipulate their, have a surplus when they would have had a deficit for the federal government. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what happens at the end of June in this financial year, but nothing in advance now.
We're still looking, so if they've only paid eighty percent, there's still twenty percent to come.
Yes, they'll cash flow that through the quarterly payments. I think the Grants Commission gave feedback to the federal government that getting a hundred percent advance actually takes away all their ability. They have to make, when they pay it in advance, they have to use the previous year's calculations to make the payments. And then they end up with over and under payments that, when they've paid a hundred percent, they can't actually adjust. So they've told the federal government they didn't want more than seventy five percent ever paid in advance, so that they've still got that twenty five percent to adjust people's payments. So I think the federal government listened to them a little bit, almost on that.
All right, so we've corrected the ship.
Yeah.
Okay, given a significant distortion in their numbers. Okay, all right.
Corrective, yeah, does that mean we're going to have a significant distortion in terms of a surplus of, you know, six million?
Well, if they, if they, so at the end of this year, if they decide to pay it in advance again, then yes, we'll probably have a, the opposite distortion this year with a huge surplus. We're hoping, as I said, that they're listening to the feedback from the LGA and from other LGAs around the country around not paying in advance in June and only paying in advance in July, so just making the payment at the start of the year. There's the potential that will happen again, hopefully, hopefully not. But yeah, what the federal government do, are really trying to manipulate their own financial results.
My understanding, you've looked through that from the point of view of underlying position and borrowings.
That's right. So our borrowing projections are always, I always project the borrowings as worst case, so it's without it ever. So even if we assume we're going to get four quarters in a year, a balance sheet always shows the expected borrowings if we don't get the payment, so that we don't get a sudden sixteen dollar jump in our borrowing projections.
So really, this thirty June position, when you look at it, is trued up.
Yeah.
And the financial position is the true position that we sit at the moment. Ignore the performance side, it's the position.
Yep.
Go, keep going, Laurie.
No, I was just really understanding that, because I think it's going to be really important for us to just make sure that the narrative around the result is very clear. And, you know, we're not too smart by half in trying to dismiss or explain stuff away, because the average person in the community reading the financial report is going to see a number that doesn't look really pretty. And, you know, just be very careful as to how that's, that's messaged out there and what we're actually specifically saying. Notwithstanding the fact that the, you know, the result isn't that flash anyway. Kind of make sure it's sort of on top of the narrative now, rather than have to be super defensive about it going forward.
Yeah, agreed. We, that's part of our messaging through the LGA to the federal government, that it makes it very hard for councils, especially ones like, so some metro councils, for them, the hundred percent payment in advance is still immaterial on their operating result. Whereas for councils like us that have a high percentage of federal FA grants compared to our overall income, it's really hard to explain to your community why you've got these weird operating results, which obviously the adjusted operating result is trying to show you the underlying long term thing. But I agree, when someone picks it up and looks at it, they can say, oh, what's going on here? So that's our messaging. The one thing I missed when going through, I guess, is that from a, not a difference from start to end of year, but one of the things affecting our overall result this year as well is that we picked, we spent nine hundred thousand dollars on our relocation from the old building to the new building. And based on the lease length, we decided, we made the decision not to capitalise that, based on the fact that that's a temporary lease for four years at the moment. So we, we expensed that through our operating. So that's obviously, just, just wanted to note that that is a one-off, large operating item that's affecting our underlying result.
And we'll talk through that when we look at the financials. But back on like Laurie's saying, I think it's key to get the narrative ready and prepped, because when the bad news coming out at the moment, journalists easy jumping on, and they've made a, council's made a loss of tip, nine point two million dollars. So I'd be, I'd be on the front foot, as Laurie has talked about, in dealing with that now. Thanks Laurie, anything else Laurie, from your perspective?
Yeah, a couple of things. More broadly, this is probably more go forward in how we can, we can adapt. So clearly things aren't going in the right direction, but we've still got things, for example, like our renewal rate is sort of up. And it's like we're getting, our revenue sources are down, but our spend on, is sort of up, trying to get, trying to catch us up. And I just wonder whether we're actually having to think about that there are things that we need to pause and pull back because of where we are. Secondly, in relation to the waste one, are we, are we seeing an increase in the total volume of waste as a result of population or economic activity? Or is that just an increase in the actual unit cost of the waste that we're paying? And then do we have ability to control the prices at the transfer stations? And the tip, or we contracted out our ability to price our way appropriately to cover those shortcuts?
Yep, so I was putting a few bits to that. So from a waste perspective in terms of the contract, so we, there's a set rise and fall mechanism built in for our costs of, the, with our contractor. So that's the set percentage, some of it goes up by CPI, some of it goes up by fuel price index, those sorts of things. So there's two parts to it, there's the disposal at the, at the waste transfer station and the curbside contract, the twin run. So there's different mechanisms for the two, but basically they're set, the set rise and fall mechanisms that we don't control, but were set at the start of the contract. And then as per our requirements, so we don't have the ability to set the pricing for our, for the community, like what the dump price is for the community, because that would be sort of illegal under the.
Breach of ACCC.
Yeah, requirements. So that is set by the contractor.
Yeah, are we in control of the transfer station? And we've subcontracted out the operation of the transfer station? Or have we subcontracted out all waste management activity and given them full ability to charge whatever price they want to us within that contract and whatever price they want to the public? Who owns the ultimate control? Is it council? Or is it subcontracted to a third party? Or is it the third party that now has the full right over everything there?
Yeah, so council doesn't own it, so the contractor is the only provider of a waste transfer station in town. They built that, it's theirs, not ours. Yeah, council contract out waste services to them and.
Yeah, and quite some time ago, the council made a decision to close, close its own waste transfer station and facility. And the current contractor built a waste transfer station, and they are in control of that waste transfer station. We have a contract with the service provider, which is Veolia. And Veolia provides the curbside waste collection services for us. And we incur then disposal costs of that waste collection into the waste transfer station. And those disposal costs are set as a matter of the contract that we have with Veolia.
So.
So it was negotiated at the time of the contract being entered into.
So are people putting more waste out? Is that a problem? Or so why is the cost going up?
Yeah, no, so there's probably two bits to that. The being, the pricing itself is starting as moderated. So some of that rise and fall, because some large waste increases in fuel costs over, like higher than CPI. The cost of service went up a bit higher than CPI over time, that's sort of moderating again into this year. So that bit will moderate, but we are seeing overall higher waste tonnages, even though we don't actually have population increase, so we're just seeing a bit of an increase over time. And where we're seeing the biggest increase is that illegal dumping hard waste area. That is going up without an offsetting reduction in what's going through our curbside.
And that's a, that's a matter, sorry to just, to add, the increase in costs of illegal dumping collection and hard waste collection is a matter of the different contract. It's not the same contract that we have with Veolia. A different party is engaged and has a contract for the collection of the illegal dumping and also hard waste collections. We are seeing and experiencing a huge increase in the nature of those activities. We have started a project this financial year around city amenity with the view to actually reducing all of that illegal waste and illegal dumping and littering. That project, as part of that project, complete review of the two contracts that we have in relation to the pickup of those, those waste streams, because we do believe that, that it is being, that it's not structured in the right way. So, so in concert with reviewing those contracts and in concert with looking to achieve behavioural change of the residents of Wayala to reduce that waste, we are hoping that we will receive or achieve significant reductions this year in the waste contract. We are also working where the largest illegal dumping and littering occurs from a verge point of view, and the largest amount of hard waste pickup occurs is in the areas of lower socio-economic position. And largely the housing trust, population and housing trust houses, where there is quite a significant turnover of tenants. And when a tenant moves out, the whole load of the furniture comes onto the verges. And they go to their next residents and they go to the op shop and get a whole heap more furniture and have that in the new residence. And so we're experiencing a significant increase in, currently working with housing trust to manage it.
So go on, Laurie.
No, I guess my question is still probably back to that issue. I'd be curious to understand how we see relative to Port Period, Port Augusta and Port Lincoln in terms of our waste disposal costs and contracting. um costs and and contracting. Um, the the structure there is um uh by no means, you know, on the on the cheap side. And and I just wonder whether we've built something that's um surplus or in excess of of what would be a a basic standard. No, no, I don't know. Uh, I should I should declare that I was on the other side of the fence right at the early days of this that transaction, but um you know, my my question is, is are we making sure that we're getting value for money relative to the other councils? And if we are, are there other opportunities to be able to um either get services from you know, some of the other councils, for example, and and actually take advantage of what we've got to try and mitigate that cost because um it's one of those areas if we don't actively do something about it, it will just keep getting away from us. And I I just think um, you know, if we look at the four or five areas we can control, that's that's one of the the big ones we should be um close to.
Laurie, Laurie, with that, we'll capture that in that focus and priority discussion again in November or February, which one it is. So then we can see where the priority is going to be given to actually looking at that. Um. Uh, because I agree with you, it's just gonna, where where is it gonna sit on everything else that management have got to do on that place there? And if you've been part of the problem, I'm sure you can be part of the solution as well.
I'd love to.
Anything else Laurie?
Um, I'll leave it from there. I may have a couple others after.
Okay, your your question about re-trimming based on revenue going down and costs going up. I think we'll capture that at item two point three when we look at the first quarter review because we've kicked over the fence projects from twenty three, twenty four to twenty four, twenty five. And I think there needs to be a discussion around what gets re-trimmed rather than just add on top. So we'll capture it there if you're okay with that Laurie. Okay, Pete.
Nothing from me. Thanks, Brian.
I read your lips then before you spoke. Yep. Thank you. Pat.
No, I had similar, interestingly, questions about the waste um issue. And also similar concerns, I suppose, about the um going down and the coming up at the same time.
Hmm.
Um, so discuss those in the next session and we discuss the waste further.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, in November, that'll probably address that. Um. I mean, look at some of the things that have been highlighted as up or down, but I think it's really much the same story that we've had in the past, so.
Thanks, Pat. Mine, a bit similar. We've had the discussion uh on on those matters. It's about what we uh what we do with it. Uh, very discursive in relation to what's happening and what needs to happen.
Hmm.
So thank you for that from the executive point of view. I suppose the key for me also is on page one, one, four. When we look at what's been uh kicked over the fence for to twenty four, twenty five and making sure that each of those expenditure items is subject now to their separate justification. So just because they're in the budget doesn't mean that happened. Things like the crematorium replacement, okay? Is that a viable option going forward for spending that money? So it's really back on management. Are there uh controls in place to have justification for each of those spends going forward? Either through the project management or your executive officer. But I think it's also worthwhile to reflect on some of the decisions in that um recession on things like the childcare centre. When we sit back and look at this is where what we said we were going to do for this reason to make it compliant, so we could potentially look at other options associated with that. Where did we end up? Have we built the racehorse? Or the horse that we needed? And I think it's it's looking at those decision in hindsight around lessons learned. So we'll capture that there, but the numbers are the numbers at the moment. And we uh uh and I acknowledge management's effort around understanding and what they do going forward. All right, we've got a resolution now. Subject to just including that operating surplus at the top. So if you've got base position. So you don't frighten hell out of council. Uh, council aware that they're going to see an ugly number?
Yeah, we did do a verbal update on that at one of the briefings.
Okay, yep, all right. Didn't frighten me when I first. Um, did have my resignation letter ready. Um, okay, we've got page one, eight, four. Uh, can I have a mover? Thanks, Pete. Second of thanks, Laurie. All those in favour? That one's passed. Okay, I'm going to continue my variation of the agenda and we'll move into two point three. So Grant, you've seen the floor at page one, twenty two.
Yep, thank you, Grant. Um, so I guess um as per you just said, the budget, first quarter budget review um because of the timing of it, we tend to not to have too much um actual data um occurring at this time of year um to make any major adjustments to the budget other than what we know about um mainly from year end, but also any other big items. So I guess from year end, um the we've picked up the the carry forward um capital projects that were in uh progress at year end. Um, and any a couple of small, a small number of operating projects where council had a have a commitment to undertake them. Uh, and they've brought forward as timing variances. I guess the only underlying change from year end is that depreciation, which is for stormwater assets, um unfortunately significant. Um, I think when you get to stormwater, you might have an asset class where you finally um do a do a revaluation and condition rating and come up with a pretty um expected result, but um that's unfortunately not the case this year. So we have worked through with Tonkin on making sure that we have done a bit of a review of our um useful lives based on um the the actual data that we have, the the current life of the assets and what condition they're in. And we have extended some of those lives out. I think there's actually still some room to move on extending the stormwater lot asset lives um a little bit further. Tonkin are of the opinion of the the end, the 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 high end. Um, but I've spoken to other um councils in metro area that definitely have longer lives on some of their stormwater assets. So um we'll, we can review that again um as we move along um and see whether there's actually still two shorter lives on stormwater, which is an interesting asset class because you can't observe most of it. You have, it's quite expensive to go and um condition rate it. So we only observe a portion of the of the network, unlike our transport and building type assets. Um, but yeah, with with all those extensions and useful life are based on um observation. Um, so we're confident that they are um reasonable. Um, and as I said, I think they can be pushed further in the future. So as I mentioned earlier, I think we need to, we'll review this asset class over the coming years and see whether the the increase in unit rates for um for particularly pipes, some of it's to do with works, but all of us do it actually concrete stormwater pipes, whether they start to moderate um and we can pull back some of the that value. Um, so that's probably the one key underlying ongoing item um that came from year end. The other two items that are obviously in the budget review are the the airport runway. So at this this stage, the the only adjustment made in the plan was to bring forward the two point million dollars that was budgeted for renewal in a future year. That's to allow council to get going on the project. Um, we've obviously got works we need to do for in uh detailed design and stuff and had no budget at the start of the year. Um, uh, being that this item came up quite um suddenly. So we've re-timed that and that's the only adjustment we've made right now. Um, obviously the business plan, um with the amount of changes that are happening with the the business plan for the airport runway at the moment, we didn't think it made sense to pull through the other changes into the plan until we've got a bit more of a picture of what that looks like. Um, so we'll discuss that as a separate item. Uh, and the other big item is the, we've got to the point where we're confident to recognise the land sale um transaction. So while we haven't signed officially signed the the contract um yet, we are at a point where the state government have said that they're they're happy, they're just waiting for the final surveying so that they can get the exact land parcel size into the into the final contract and change maybe a couple of thousand dollars here or there on price. Um, but they've already started telling people that they've basically purchased the land. So we're pretty confident that they they want it and that it's going to go ahead. So we've started modelling that in now. And we did actually make a couple of others, um industrial lot sales. Um. We have signed contracts for them. They'll happen in February uh in our industrial estate.
Just just on that, have we got the narrative? I'm not going to go out and say they've done this and give them why like X millions of dollars. I I'll be ready with contingency plan if they do, because the question we ask, what are you doing with the money?
Um, the government will want to be the 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 party that announces it.
Yep.
Um, and um certainly discussions are underway with the government in terms of how that's going to happen. But absolutely, we do need to be ready with our own narrative as to what we're doing with the money.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I guess as outlined in the report, the key, uh, two key things we've probably done with the the land sales, which we had flagged that we would pick up when we we picked up the land sale income. So one is we had a council resolution around the the interest savings from that funding the the operations of the um Four Shaw Plaza project. So that was council resolved that and that was part of that two speed. When we changed the two speed strategic plan earlier in the year. So we have made sure that we pick them up at the same time. Um, and also when we did the the adjustments to our long term financial plan earlier in the year. One of the key messaging was around not having uh the, I guess, the volume of our rate increases above CPI. They were previously one point six percent above CPI. During the plan this year, we managed to bring the average down to zero point nine. But what that meant was uh year one and two, we weren't able to adjust really. They were sitting at one point four percent above CPI and then it was zero point seven for the other. Um, and what we flagged was that when this transaction was picked up, we would look to try and get year one and two to be consistent with those other eight years. So we have almost got that. We got them down to zero point nine percent above CPI. So now we've got a much more, I guess, um realistic and achievable sort of rate increases that um fix some of those affordability issues. We know the risks we had in our plan as flagged by the committee and ASCOZA. So they're the two key items that we've sort of picked up with that at the same time as the land sale income, um as previously sort of identified.
All right, thanks. Before I open it up for general discussion, um I think what we need going forward in each of the quarter reviews is a separate section around cost reduction strategies. Because this is something ASCOZA pointed out, um that there's limited um discussion around that. And as part of submitting the corporate plan with the long term financial model and budget, there were a number of items raised that were going to be done around cost reduction. With some accounting practices but other things. So I think we need to call out a s- a specific section each reporting around. What did we say we're going to do?
Yeah.
Have we done and what else are we doing in relation to that?
Hmm.
Um, the the other part before we get into numbers is we are seeing continued un-re while at the moment and speculation around what's happening with the steel side of it. Um, and the the question for me is, are is the council going to go back and look at some of the decisions it has made through the lens of the current uncertainty, particularly around money has now come in to the council? Should they be progressing with things like the foresaw redevelopment, given the volatility that sits within uh Wyla? So is it the right thing to do to still be spending when other people, being contractors and workers, are being impacted by volatility within the market? And what else should the council be looking at? Because they are a employer as well as a spender in the marketplace within Wyla around how they can help the Wyla community in the current environment.
So I think there was a question there. The answer is yes, that is time. Um, we are starting to gear up to have a workshop with the elected members on that very subject. Um, the initial thinking was with our capital works programme, whether we can potentially reshape some of that and look at creating packages that work specifically for local contractors that may not typically work for council. Um, um, incidentally, we we believe that some contractors are so to service one entity, being the Stillworks, and they don't pay much attention to other um um work opportunities in Wyla, including council. Um, and probably possibly not too distant to the Stillworks. When they do happen to quote work for council, their prices typically are quite high. So we need to have a conversation with them to say, if you continue to put in really high tender prices or quotes, that means we can do less. Um, and you're actually doing a disservice for your local community and your family and you know, your business by essentially over overpricing your work. So we're starting to gear up for that. Um, we haven't locked in a date just yet, um that we were looking at um sometime in October, I think, to have that workshop and then um uh we'll bring a report back for your council in due course.
Okay, um, would the committee be comfortable if we note in our minutes that um it is recommended that council really look at the priority and focus in relation to capital expenditure island items, but specifically large expenditure items, including the foresaw development in light of the current environment and the uh use of the um proceeds from land sale? Are we comfortable including that? Laurie?
Yes.
All right, so there's two bits in there. One is around the cost reduction strategy section and the other around uh a need to review, given the light of the economic environment overlaying the Wyla region. Okay, I'm going to open up for general discussion now. So Peter?
No, nothing to add. Thanks, Grant.
Pat, I'll go to you this time.
Um, well, thanks for the update on the land sales. I was wondering how certain certain was. I feel a bit more comfortable now that at least that money is coming in, the question, obviously.
We haven't got to show me the cash moment, yeah?
No, not yet, but that lady's getting there.
Can't say that anymore.
Oh, no, you can't. Oh, whatever.
Yep.
Um, the uh the AI person is nearly there. Um, and then there's the um airport runway, which we need to talk about, but I presume we're talking about that separately.
Yep, we'll be dealing that under four point one.
Okay, um, and then it's really a case of what are we doing with the money going forward and a a look at some of those capital projects or, and I mean, I still see the childcare renewal money is being spent on like well, it was over twelve months ago. It was like, what's happening?
Oh, yeah.
Why are we spending more money and, you know?
I think we'll deal with that again, the deeper discussion rather than.
Yeah.
Couple that one there, make it on the spot. I know what you're going to say.
Yeah.
But it's that broader discussion around what we want to achieve and now the position we've got in at the moment.
So, um, yeah, I I guess I agree with what you've said with the cost reduction. I was looking for where was that? And I was looking for, well, are we having to rethink what we're doing with the money? Um, and along that, um, no.
Thank you, Laurie.
No, for me, it's the the need to express um urgency to have more flexibility in how and what we're spending on. Given the the changing circumstance and the um the number of significant items that are actually going on concurrently. Um, just means we need to pull our head in and and be able to have some um opportunity to make tweaks and changes and whether that is um, you know, deferring spending or, you know, making changes to capital programmes or um yeah, you know, indeed, you know, investing, changing the investment mix. I I think that's the bit that we have to make sure we're flagging and informing council of that. That this is a time to really be agile and be able to um adjust accordingly. Um, given the environment and and some of those decisions should be put forward. So that's the thing I'm I'm keen to see uh in the night.
Thanks, Laurie. From my perspective, uh, what I would be looking for or be recommending that management consider uh being brought back for the Q two review is what are the financial re-engineering options to restore it to the original budget position? Because we've kicked over the fence, uh expenditure of one point, a hundred and forty plus a two point seven in in uh works. We know you can't do everything. So what's going to drop off? And identify what's going to drop off and build it back. So what are those financial re-engineering options to get it back to the original position, if not better on that piece there? Um, and in that, to me, the recommendation is we're recommending those two items, one and two to council, but subject to the identification of financial re-engineering options to restore to original budget position as part of the Q two review. Pat, would you be comfortable with that, the subject to?
Yeah.
I don't think we can just, personally, I don't think we just say, yep, roll it over and here's the new number. There's got to be an action, a subject to attach to it. Laurie, your thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
But Peter?
Yeah, I'm okay with that too.
And guys, I'm I'm sure you don't have a problem with that because that's something you've got to do anyway, you know, in relation to that. So we're not asking anything you wouldn't be doing. So we've got recommendation one and two with that subject to the identification piece, words I just used there. So if I can have a mover, thanks, Pat. Second of thanks, Pete. All those in favour? Um, while that's, we've still got this one o- open. Um, um, for me, on page one, twenty four, I'm just hearing this wiping off the three million dollars worth of funding out of the airport, whether we are just playing with numbers there. And don't we want to show that this is what, it it's generating negative cash for us, such consuming cash. Um, there are costs to share shaded with it. Why, why this internal transfer of three million forgiveness? Because you could argue it other way, pay off all the debt and we could make the airport profitable because it doesn't have any finance cost attached to it or close to. So are are we just playing with numbers there by transfer?
Well, we are, but I guess by even separating out the airport, we are playing with numbers. It is, well, I I agree with what the committee has said previously. The ca- the airport is actually, um, it's part of council's operations and we need it to us to be sustainable with the airport overall. So it is, it's about actually a debt reduction. What what we're going to, we're going to get to a point, hopefully in our plan, because of the the land sales and some of the other things we've got going on, our projections, that we actually won't wouldn't have any borrowings other than the airport borrowings that we've attributed to the airport. And then we'll get to a point where we're below that level. So it doesn't, we're not going to hold borrowings higher than we actually um have. So really, at some point, we're going to have to reengineer that anyway and actually start to bring the cash flow um or the borrowings down for the airport back to where they and there's a, and coming back, I I guess we picked a arbitrary point in time to start accounting for the airport separately. And it happened to be just before COVID started and just before we had to do some other investment in the airport. So you could argue that the borrowing position, if we had have started ten years earlier, accounting for the airport separately, would be lower. And so that the maybe the interest we're actually attributing to the airport is too high, which does actually attribute to it looking financial more financially unsustainable than it really is. So I guess for us, if this is just more of an internal plan about how do we bring that back to a bit more of a reasonable level over time. Um, um, so that when we talk about the sustainability of the airport, it is actually reasonable. So it is, look, it is only an internal transaction, but it's about also recognizing what the committee said. We actually have to make the airport somehow financially sustainable. Now, some of that is over here in terms of pricing. But sometimes, some of it is looking at other airports, even in recognizing that our borrowing costs for our airport are substantially higher, like our attributed borrowings are higher. And so that we probably do need to bring that back down for it to to look realistic. Like, we, we spoke to Air National Council, um, who run the Paul Lincoln Airport. And and when you look at their actual cost base, it's actually very similar to ours. They are, you know, and and which is interesting because they they actually run an airport that's got three times the passenger numbers we do. But overall, when you look at the fixed costs of running an airport, it's about the same. It's not much different. The big difference is they have been accounting for their airport for twenty five years separately. Um, and they have lower overall borrowings, probably because of that, because they've had that ups and downs of investment and 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 then paying some of that off. So I I think the three million is just us recognizing that the borrowings are probably a bit high. Probably for the fact that we we started attributing the airport separately and then we went into COVID. And that three million probably looks at mostly about two million. That is probably our losses for the airport over that period that we wouldn't have accumulated if it had have been business as usual, say COVID hadn't happened. It did. But it was, it's sort of that timing issue of when we started. So the answer to the question is, I think, is yes, but we still think it's reasonable actually do to do that. It's, it's us making an internal recognition of getting things back to probably where they need to be.
Yeah, I I'm struggling with that because um I get it, it's part of the overall mix. But when you sit back and look at, we've expended money to build up the airport. So we've we've built up the facilities. Yes, we've had grants, but they're with the runway as well. So there there should be the ability to say, well, this is the amount of money we've actually spent and that would have had to come from somebody. And just because it's not external borrowings, it can be internal borrowing within the council as well. So, um, to me, I think if we've got to rewrite, well, what is the right number and starting position? Rather than just ta- taking this um and but three million, let's go back and look at, well, what is the position if we had to reconstruct it? So around, and if we even look at o- over the past five years of expenditure as well and cash flow from running the operation, try and rework that number back as well. Because a lot of this is flowing in what you're going to the government as well. And it's, it's, it's changing the position from uh financial profitability and cash as well. And I I think it's distorting. As I said, you could just wipe out the debt totally and it picks up half a million dollars a year better off.
Yeah, the only complication for me is for thirty years, we've owned the airport and probably haven't invested in it. And so in theory, it probably was making cash. It would have been, in a perfect world, it would have been building up some cash that would have offset some of these investments that have now occurred. So so look, maybe that's what we need to do is sort of try and go back throughout, further go back the 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 rubber, the numbers get in our financial records. But um, yeah, look, that can, I can do some modeling around that. I have had that.
And then we agree those assumptions in the position saying, this is the base position. Because we've all been working off, it's not generating money for us. And there's this borrowing and internal charge there. You start stripping those numbers out, the position is different.
Hmm, yep.
And, you know, at the further it strips down to close to zero or a positive cash flow, it's saying, well, yeah, that's a benefit for the committee of having the airline in place and we're willing to wear that. At the moment, we're seeing this as the millstone. It may not be the millstone at all with what we're doing. Um, so I think rather than just approving the three million, we go back and look at, this is the position. And it potentially looks at a different light, because when you look at what we're going to present to the government, there there's, to me, there's mixed messaging in there. It's not, it's not an easy read when you look at it to say, yep, we can base our decision based on this proposition. Laurie, I'd be interested in your comments on that.
I'm I'm aligned with what you're saying. Um, you know, it's not an easy, there's no easy fix to it. Um, but, yeah, a a bit is really just making sure that we've got a uh a a clear narrative that um paints some sort of a a positive projection for the future and what we're actually trying to do. Um, rather than just being been letting things flow on with the how they have been, I guess. That's that's probably the key thing for me.
Yeah, and it comes down to that when we get that, what's raw debt within the organization? What's that actually attributable? Is it because we've gone and spent extra on capital expenditure? Or is it we haven't, you know, increased rates to a certain level? Rather than say, well, half of that debt relates to the airport, well, really does it? Um, and I think that's part of that, you know, thinking from the past into the future piece for me.
Yep.
Peter, anything from you on that?
No, just I kind of agree with everything that's been said at this point. I think it's really important that, um I can't remember if someone mentioned that the the narrative around this, because it is a millstone around our necks and it's certainly something that um the the community is really hot, hot on. Um, so, yeah, we've got to get the narrative right and apply the funds correctly.
Pat? Okay, all right, we'll move on to agenda two point one. So, um, do we have our external orders available?
John, do you respect his online or?
Okay, so what we'll do, management, can you leave the room?
Yeah, we'll do that one, yeah.
So we need to go into? Make a resolution. Confidence, thanks. You didn't have to go, Laurie. Uh, we want to keep you, we want to keep you in the room.
So, yeah.
Okay, if you give us, we passed a resolution.
Who moved it?
Uh, moved by Peter, seconded by Pat. Everybody's in favor. Okay, so, uh, welcome back. Everybody will put the um a resolution to go back in?
Oh, you don't have to.
Don't have to, okay, polite then. We're going to move into agenda item uh two point one. Given that we had just, we've talked through the financial results, we've, we've been through some of this information. So, Grant, if you don't mind, I'll just control this side of it and then bring you in when we need to.
Yeah, I've just, do you want me to, I can just make a couple of small comments? Or or because I agree, I I don't think we need to talk about the result because we've spoken through that already. I just wanted to say, I think the, I have to say, this is probably the smoothest audit, year end order I've ever been through. I don't know what the, what feedback you got from John and Anton, but like, it was really, really smooth. And I wanted to say um a big thanks and recognize like the work that Sandra does on, you know, Sandra really is in charge of our internal controls, which is one of the opinions we get. Um, and so that was, uh, went really well. And obviously, the financials we've smashed out, I think we got them ready, I reckon, the earliest we've ever done. Um, and obviously, and no, and very few, um, even queries from the orders. I think, um, it's nice to think about how the process works these days. I think of old audits where the orders would rock up for their three day audit and we'd spend, spend the first two days running around like headless chooks, trying to pull out um all sorts of things. I think the way the process works now with the portal and being able to get everything ready, you know, a week or so before worked really well. And um, yeah, it was really, yeah, it was, me and Sandra kept having chats about what's going on, what's, what have we missed? Um, because everything seemed to be going very, very smoothly. But um, so that's always good. So, um, yeah. Um, I, as I said, I think we've discussed all the actual outcome and results from the statements. So, um, yeah.
Make some closing comments on behalf of the com- uh committee in relation to the work put in by management in relation to getting this here, but let's deal in, dive into the information itself. We'll go to appendix B on page seventy six first. So we've got the management representation letter from you, Justin, which I'm taking that Grant is comfortable with as well.
Yep.
Uh, is there anything you want to draw our attention to in relation to the management representation letter?
Um, I think if in terms of items in here, um in high level, and we did, this was included in the letters, um, that came from Justin and Grant. There was obviously one case of we've classed it as um identified as fraud. It was probably not. It's probably borderline whether it's fraud or not, but we had an issue with an employee. Um, and that was dealt with um in terms of accessing um information. But other than that, I don't think there's anything too exciting in the management letter or anything that's going to change really any um much from an accounting policy point of view, other than some useful live tweaks on our um stormwater. Um, um, yeah, nothing, nothing else this year.
I I I think there's a litigation activity underway at the moment, so, and that's not scored a heavy. Just overlay or outline what the litigation and any financial considerations we should be given to that.
What can we say about that one then? Um.
I'm looking more from a contingent liability exposure point of view. Let me frame it from that point of view.
I'm I'm happy to, if you want to interject there, just to say that we did have a discussion about that. And because of the confidential nature of it and also the position of it, it was decided that no um, no disclosure would be included in the financial statements, given it was a public document. Um, but it wasn't audit matter that was discussed, just so that the audit committee aware that us as auditors did query that and we did have a discussion.
Shall we go into confidence to understand that some more?
Um, we, yes, we would need to go into confidence to understand it some more and staff.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to leave as well because I don't really, I'm not.
Yeah. Um, this has been, this is T T E G. Uh, this has been locked down to very few people in terms of the litigation. Um, um. Uh, so, yes, we would need to go into confidence and staff would need to leave the room except for Justin and myself.
I think, given we're recommending the financial statements to council and this is, could be a a contingent liability or liability sitting there, we need to understand that. Um.
Sorry, guys, can I, can I just interject just for one minute? I've only got ten minutes left because I'm actually working out at another client's office. Uh, and I've only got the room left for ten minutes. So, um, I'm happy to stick around if you want to do that that bit, or if you wanted to, and I don't mean to push the the agenda. Um, if if you wanted to deal with the audit matters and maybe that one separately, I'm I'm happy either way. I just though, you know, I got the rent till twelve thirty, sorry.
Yeah, well, okay, while we've still got you, um, we'll move on to your report.
Yeah, sorry about that, everyone.
That's okay. We'll just note that in future. Um, positive and negative. So we'll go to your report. We'll go to your report. Uh, is there anything you want to draw our attention to?
Uh, look, there's just a couple of outstanding matters that are noted on page four of our report, which is in a normal course of any audit. Um, the matters that that we still need to obtain and to sign off the audit. Um, but at this stage, uh, we we anticipate that both an unqualified audit opinion for both the controls and the financial statements will be uh will be issued. Um, uh, as I mentioned.
Yeah, just on that. So we're on page ninety three. Um, Justin, you'll be signing the letter. Want to table?
Yes.
Want to table?
Yep.
Um, is there any subsequent events from balance day that you is aware of?
The only one we've listed in there, in the actual statements, um, was the signing of the the two contracts for the industrial land. Um, we haven't, because we haven't signed the contract for the um, the large land sale, we haven't included that. And as today is the day, we, that's not signed as a, um, today, so that won't be included.
Yeah, but again, it will be when council considers the financials as well.
No, today is the day, I believe we would do is today, once it's, what happens if anything happens between now, John, and when council? Do we have, what do we do with that?
It's live until we sign. So anything hap- it's live until the effectively the signature's done. So any, any significant events up to that that time, um, it gets factored into.
Yeah, but council haven't resolved to accept the financials.
No, but they have resolved that Justin and the mayor can sign them off. So that happens, yes, so that we resolved that earlier in the year.
Okay, so, yep, that's, that closes off today.
Yep.
Okay. Um. Anything else? Sorry, sorry, keep going on your report.
No, it's all right. So there's no uncorrected misstatements, um, whatever, in the, in the financial side, there's no, nothing further in terms of those changes. The only thing I did want to highlight was that we have made the recommendation that the landfill provision um be reviewed. Um, and and that be reflected um in accordance with um the the stated accounting standard. Um, so we're happy to work through with the administration on that one for next year. But that is where we recommend an independent um assessment and update to that landfill liability is undertaken. Um, and and appropriately adjusted in the twenty five figures.
And that's captured in the disclosure in the notes as well, that that'll be done by thirty June twenty twenty five, from my reading.
I believe it was, yes, yep.
All right, any questions before we go into in camera? No? Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry, Grant. I just had a, just a quick question for management. Just about, uh, if I could just elaborate on that fraud case, which turned out to be.
But people will come, we'll come back to that one after we're dealt with this larger matter. Because we don't need the externals as part of that because they're across that piece there. Okay, so if we can go into in camera?
Yep, so you need.
Resolution, uh, mover Laurie, second to Pat. All those in favor, we're in. Okay.
All right, we're recording again, so.
So we're back on?
Yep.
All right, we're repeating, I think we'll note the independent declaration that sits within the audit report. Because we are signing off on that as well, the their independence on page ninety three.
Yep, got that signing as well. Yep.
And also the, we'll note their report that they've provided. We'll go back to the representation letter. We have in there the valuations. Um, and just on the valuation, the civic building is something we looked at last year. Again, there's no proposed directions being affirmed on that. That's captured at page fifty, but there's no disclosure there. Uh, the estimates and assumptions on page four. Um, I don't think that last year we talked about COVID, the impact of COVID. There is nothing in there this year. I think we will go to the accounting standards on page forty. Where management have made a decision not to early adopt any of those changes. Are we comfortable with that position? Pat?
Yep.
Yep, Laurie? Peter?
Yep.
And also on note seventeen one on page forty. And this is in relation, and Grant, you touched on it in a previous agenda item associated with the um accommodation. At, um.
Oh, yes, yep.
So this is, this is dealing with the uh where, sorry, what page was on? Note seventeen one. Is that sixty five?
Sixty five. Maybe you're on it a little bit further, sorry, I was. Uh, oh, yeah, sorry, uh, sixty seven.
Sixty seven, so I played sixty seven. So this is the um accounting principle that management have agreed to adopt. So this is at seventeen one on page sixty seven, and we're comfortable with that as well?
Yeah.
Laurie? Um. Just, just for our information, noting that you've got a peppercorn lease at the moment. So when you finally do get accommodation, there'll be rent applicable to it if you're a tenant. And we'll need to start thinking through that as well.
There will, I guess, our offsetting, we have thought about that. The offsetting thing they have is we're obviously still depreciating the old civic building right now until we know the future of that site. So that will, if we come up with a solution for that, that will drop off. And we all.
Do you think that'll cover it though?
Potentially, potentially not, depends. Potentially, potentially not, depends on, yeah, on the nature of, it is quite a big building with a decent amount of appreciation on it. The other thing that we're also dealing with at the moment from a cost perspective is we actually have to maintain quite large ground, that offsetting our peppercorn lease status is. The we have to maintain the grounds, that was part of the agreement. So that's obviously a cost to council at the moment that we're dealing with in our financial at the moment. So yeah, that's another offsetting.
It's just something to consider, to bear in mind that as you transition to a corporate relationship out of building ownership.
Yeah, yeah.
Other costs come up.
Yep.
Or, okay, we have that there. Okay, um. What I'm going to do now and we'll open it up, we'll go around the table and we'll do any pages that anybody wants to ask questions. And then we can go to the resolution. So Pat, anything? On your notes that you'd like to talk through?
Now, check off in that one. Um. Just your depreciation rates, you've got five to ten years for office stuff. And I mean, computers aren't capitalised unless they're over five grand, I presume.
That's right, so. Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Because that would be a much lower rate than five years generally.
Yeah, we, the only stuff we really capitalise is our, um I guess our network, so our towers, um those sort of large items. Um and they do tend to get sort of about eight years out of them. Um but yes, most of our smaller IT stuff is not capitalised.
I had to do a double take a little bit on some of the. Uh just not double take, I just had to do a a cross checking myself with a couple of the comments, but I think that that was okay. Um I was. Sorry, just tell me to go through.
That's fine, that's fine. Important part of what we do.
So you, just on the financials on page forty six, you've got zero carrying amount of assets sold in your real estate development assets. Um but you have got real estate development inventories.
Yes, so they sort of sell as and we're not, we haven't, for the past few years, we haven't actively marketed them, but they are available for sale. They're the ones. So we have got two sale contracts coming up for the coming year. Um and so that we take offers or take inquiries as they come in. Um and we're starting to see a lot more interest on, Justin probably actually knows more about that than me because he sees them come through, but yeah, we are expecting more of those to move soon.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, um. That's depreciation. Um I'm sorry, this is taking.
It's okay.
And just on page sixty nine, legal expenses, you mentioned there that the. Requirements for your future restorations on Newton Street haven't been identified. Um but if applicable, once identified, they'll be included and amortised. Now, it's under legal expenses. Um I was just a little confused as to what that was.
Yeah, um it's an interesting spot. I think we've had that there for a number of years. So what, because of the the age of our current Mount Laura site, so that one is um. Uh that one's picked up fully, so we have a, we have a fully depreciated asset and we have a provision in our. Getting for the um the twenty five year period that we manage that for. Because of Newton Street, because of when it was opened and closed, it sort of predated. All the current requirements, so we haven't, we didn't appreciate an asset over its life as it was used as a landfill and it closed before some of those requirements came in. Look, there may be some EPA requirements in the future. We still, we sort of manage the site very um at a low level. Um so I think that's just noting that.
So that's EPA requirements, but it's just showing under legal.
Yeah, it's under legal, but yeah, yeah.
Something to look at in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Spot.
Yep.
Legal slash regulatory.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably more regulatory, right?
Regulatory.
Can you make that amendment? Are we happy except because the audit is signed off on it?
I'm happy.
Yeah, we'll look to, I'll make a note for next year, we'll just change that word. Yep.
And I guess page seventy, we, there's a significant amount of key management personnel. Uh relation, doing business with the council. I take it we're happy that um all required. Conflicts have been managed appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, the the main bit there comes from one of our council members is on Works for the Olia.
Oh, I see.
So he's an elected member, he's a key management personnel, and so most of the cost actually relates to that, so.
That makes me feel a bit better because I went, oh, wow.
Yeah.
I do have a big exclamation on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, okay, um. Yeah. And that's the rep letter. Yep, no, that's okay now.
Peter?
Uh nothing from me, only just, I'd just like to go back to the audit completion report, just in terms of the the fraud or. Or as I termed it, had been sorted internally. Could you elaborate on that?
If I can through the chair, uh await to do that during the confidential item and then ask staff to not to be present during a particular item.
Yeah, well, we'll we'll capture that at four point one. Uh on on. Peter, uh as part of the reps letter I provided to the auditors. Uh but we'll we'll round that off uh at four point one for you.
Hmm, yeah.
Thanks.
Laurie, oh sorry, Pete, anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Laurie?
No, look, I I actually think they read okay, the 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 papers are um good and they're they're clear and as the auditor said. My my issue is more around those those actions arising. Um the actual set of papers, uh I had no real issues with.
Okay, now I'm going to do a pat on you, meaning I'm going to be a little bit slow.
Sorry.
As I flip through, um again, no showstopper for me. I think it's just noting that on page thirty four, we now got that cumulative net timing difference. Uh something we haven't had in the past, but it shows now it's back to.
Back to zero, yep.
Back to zero, because you really don't have that starting position of the uh net cumulative piece there. Um.
Yeah, well, I think it goes back to about seven years before it was, since it was last at zero, so we thought we didn't want to report too many lines in there.
With the residential, we've dealt with the fair value, we've got all the disclosures on uplift of depreciation, which we are aware of. Uh just on page sixty and it's something for next year.
Mm hmm.
We've got liability leases, we've got nothing, but then we move in, uh sorry, we've got the accounting policy, but then we move into. Financial assets and financial liabilities. There's no leading. Because it doesn't sit with leases. This is on page sixteen.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to look at, yeah, we might look at the model financial statements and where.
What what, I I think it's just the title missing.
Yeah, okay, yep. No, we can look at that for next year, just for the, yeah, the financial assets.
Yes.
Yep.
Mine on the, and this is again around that narrative and I don't want to change it now, but on page thirty eight is really. Honing him into the income recognition uh around the five point six million dollars. So it's very clear that. Because we just pointed out it's in note one, but if we had to point at it's note one, three.
Yeah.
Actually go to that number and the same then on page sixty four, if we had the opportunity and say, and here is the number, it's five point six million, so. Gives people a hard number.
Yep.
That they're aware of.
Okay.
Now, again, given that we're going to sign them today, I probably wouldn't change that, but it comes back into the.
Reports.
The narrative.
Yeah, narrative around it, yeah.
Goes around that, but just something to bear in mind in future.
Mm hmm.
Right, if you're going to point people, sometimes it's easy just to give them a number as well.
Yep, okay, no, that's fine. Yeah, especially when it's as large as it is this year, yeah.
And just on page forty four, just noted that sale of the commercial land as we knew, but not the the larger payments.
Yep.
Okay, um I'm good. So I think we've got a resolution. We're going to range our notes and we'll capture those in the minutes as we did last year. I think so.
Yep.
If you go back to see what we wrote last year.
Yep.
We've gone through the same process.
Yep.
Just in relation to the resolutions. If we can make. Sorry, please do bring. Yeah, page twenty three, if we can make the first recommendation, recommendation three. Reason being there, we are noting, so this is part of the decision making, we're noting the order completion report.
Yep, it's changed the order, yeah.
Then we're agreeing to recommend that they um be approved, so.
Yep.
The recommendation will be three will be one, one will be two, and two will be three.
Yep, all right.
Are we comfortable with that? It's just that the logic, I always struggle that you've approved something and you note something, so. You note it upfront.
Yeah.
In consideration. So we have a mover. Thanks, Pat. A second of three, all those in favour?
Sorry, you seconded?
Yep.
Laurie.
Laurie, yeah. Uh I think from the committee point of view, congratulations. Um Grant to you and your team for what's been done and putting this together.
Sandra's present.
And I know Sandra's present as well, so I call out Sandra as well, but I think it sits across the whole executive how clean. And how on top of the numbers you are. Um it's how we get the traction out of the organisation going forward, which. And the external audit is a complementary of the process this year as well, so.
Excellent.
Uh okay, we will, we might have a break. Have a ten minute break.
And ten minutes.
Get one to move from the German to ten minutes.
Yep, yep. So we'll move from German for ten. Thanks, Pete. Second a Laurie, all those in favour? That's approved, so we'll have a ten minute break.
Thank you. Um thanks for letting me say a few words today. We 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 won't elaborate too much, but um. You know, it's an overview on us, but also financial sustainability. So um I guess if we go to the next slide. Here, so here's a here's a nice view of slides of your, of a lovely uh city. We've been there recently. Um just an idea, so while the LGFA created, um it was through a need, it was created back in nineteen eighty four. Basically, what happens is a few councils around the state tried to get credit for themselves. Um and it's an anecdotal story, I think it was West Torrens Council or something at the time. I wanted to buy a truck, they had to go to four different banks to borrow ten thousand dollars each to buy a truck. And that's when some quite clever forefathers and foremothers, you know, um basically decided, look, let's, why don't we start our own authority? Because Safer, a subspring, um finance authority was set up um a bit before this, so that people saw that worked quite well. So I thought, why don't we set up the LGFA, the local government's version of that um as well, so that we can get access to funds. Councils, you've got to, you've got to get almost guaranteeing income strength coming in each year of money through your rates and your and your grants. Um so you and um and and it is a tax, you know, as well as the way I see it, you know, it is, it is dependent on people's ability to pay. Because obviously if they own a more expensive property, they usually have higher income levels. So they should be able to borrow at will, and that was the problem at the time. So they, some some people, pretty smart people decided to set up the LGFA. Um and that's why we were created more than anything, more for, what it did evolve into, which is quite clever, is that this is pre GFC where. Um you know, you could get higher rates for wholesale money if you could package it up into large parcels. Now, that's changed a lot as probably people as we're in now. Now, the smaller deposit holders get a better rate than the wholesale markets. Um and that's for different reasons, because of the apra liquidity rules, as as some of you may know. But more than anything, it's a good idea too, because for quite a few years, some of our actual, uh our lending rates were pretty, were pretty good, market leading. But also what happens is pulling those funds that allowed us to invest in wholesale markets and actually get a better rate of return for councils. What's happened over, I guess, over the last fifteen to twenty years more than anything, is that council balance sheets are flipped and we are a net. We are a net borrower now, so we we need to borrow money from the state government to fund, so the sector overall. Consider that has deposits. And and what we do is because we treat it as like a balance sheet of a bank, we actually borrow money from the ca- the councils as deposits. So there are councils different to Waila Council, um Marion Campbelltown, just a name too. Um that actually put their money and actually have money in deposits. I don't agree with it personally, but I'll go into that later if you if you guys want to, if we've got time. I think that you're better off being a net borrower if you if and be, if you need to be, if you're growing and you need to actually provide infrastructure. Um but anyway, but we still, we about about three quarters of our balance sheet is funded from deposits from the sector. And then we use those deposits to then lend out money to councils like Waila. Um and Playford and Onka Perenga and so forth as well. Um so that's the, that's the basically um. Uh you know, how how that piece works in regards to this. So we are predominantly funded from the sector. Uh and we are actually a very unusual stake in authority. We are a profit making entity. Um we are here to make profit, our assets with. With a view to avoid a loss and every CEO and board that's ever come along have said, well, the view of voiding a loss is actually making a profit, is what we've said. So we, we've done, we've done that since inception. We might, I think we met one year where we just lost about about thirty, thirty thousand dollars and since then we've made a profit since then. Um so each year we 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 provide a special. Back to some of our problems back to the sector on a pro rata basis, and the more you use it, the more you use us, the more money you get back. Some of Onka Perenga, Playford get quite a. Large distribution back to them. Um and that's just the way that our app says it, it says that we need to provide. Distribution for those who use our services. And so we've done it on a pro rata basis since day one and no one's really complained about that. They thought it was pretty, pretty uh fair way to do it, equitable. So this year, we just declared our our financials just signed off a couple of days ago and we're going to pay a three million dollar um distribution this year from about a. Um from around about five and a half million dollar profit after after tax. We don't pay tax per se, we pay, so we pay, sorry, special distribution, we've paid fifty seven million dollars since our inception. And tax equivalent regime, so we don't pay tax to the federal government, we pay the equivalent, um some of you may have heard of this, to the state government. There's a really great thing that someone negotiated way, way before my time, is that tax equivalent money actually goes back. To the LGA and the R research and development scheme to fund other projects in the sector. So it's a really good point of difference for us is that, yes, you could go and you could probably donate CBA now, ANZ and get a similar products and offerings to us. But if we make a profit, you know, our tax goes back to the sector. If I and now make a profit, which they do, it goes to the federal government as a taxation. So it's really good, a really good thing that is a point of difference, which I just would like to point out to all audit and risk committees, there are. Other reasons than just the rate, which we 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 try to be, we think we're market leading. It's hard, as some of you may know, in the in the credit and debt markets to know exactly where the competition is at any point in time unless you get tested. But the deposit market is a little bit clearer because there we we get, we've got a team here who research what the rates are and we always try and. Match the best major bank rate that we can find out there. And the special distribution distribution is paid on top of that. Um so we've gone through that quickly already. How do we fund ourselves? Well, predominantly through deposits from the sector itself, from the sector. But we also borrow, we have committed lines with the state government as well, from Safer as well. So we have a. About seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of committed facilities from them that I negotiate with the treasurer and their team. Um every couple of years, to make sure we've got enough money to do that. And just to let you know, you know, it is a good relationship. Um that they don't charge us for those facilities.
No line fee.
No, we're very lucky. Um because I think that, you know, um the current treasurer at least. Um is very supportive. He knows that he wants to ha- he wants councils to have access to credit. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't want to be going, welcome, this infrastructure project that we need to do. Doesn't want the credit thing, don't want to throw money away. And we want to be very careful about how we talk about sustainability in a second. But you know, they're definitely very um supportive of of giving us the lines that we need. And that's why we've got a bit of buffer in there, because during the um, at the start of COVID, for example, councils came to us pretty hard because they were all in a bit of flux as well. And we and we know that you you may have seen it and some of it's probably flown through, especially what Grant's seen over the years with some of the really low rate increases that occurred at the start of COVID. Probably it's hurting a lot of councils now because those zero percent rate increases, yeah, felt good at the time. For council to to look like they're helping the situation, but all they did was then. Bank bank that into their long term financial plan for the remainder of the plan. And then it's very hard to catch up. You know, and no one likes putting a C a CPI plus increases into their plans. And and it's and it's not a good look in the media because they like to bash you up for it. Um but sometimes we have to, and that's why I'm not like a Scozow, I don't get, I don't get too caught up in. People putting above CPI if they need to. You need to do what you need to do to be sustainable is what I say. And so that's why I'm a bit different to what some of the, it's the um Scozow rhetoric is. Justin, have you guys been through a Scozow?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I forget.
Potentially unsustainable.
Yes, that new reign they've given out there, that's new scale that they've created, um you know, and you know, I think. Um personally, I think, yeah, it's tough and it's expensive, but I I tell lots of CEOs and audit risk committees to use that as a tool to try. But I, I tell, what I see as an audit risk committees to use that as a tool to try sustainability in your chamber where you can. You know, if there's advice, you may as well use it to go and use it in your chamber. Here's the people who've dug in, that lifted the bonnet, they've done a really good look at, at the business and are still a business in my personal opinion. And they've said, yeah, look, you know, potentially unsustainable, well, it's not unsustainable, Justin. So at least, you know, you can catch the, you can catch it, you know, and you can make some changes, which is, I mean, we'll go into a bit later. But I've seen the latest LTFP, it looks pretty good, like it's, looks like it's going in a good direction. I'm jumping around a bit here, but the toughest thing that's happened for the sector over the last two to three years is inflation. Has really hurt a lot of councils because they now have to revow all of their assets and then add higher unit rates as a result of depreciation charges coming up. So as you guys know, depreciation is not great in the government sector, great in the private sector, reduces tax bill, but not here because there's no tax, you know, and as such, all that's just another, another, another cost, another expense for the council. Which I agree with because it should reflect the amount of assets that you've utilized in one particular year. It's an art as much as it's a science. And so for us, we understand that too. So, but what we'd like to see councils doing is indexing their asset base along the journey. We know that it's a statute requirement to happen at four years approximately, depends on when the council's elected and so forth. And the AMPs were done last time, but just for you, you know, a really good thing for any order is to be, say, really keep asset valuations, make sure that Justin and his team are looking at that, making sure that it being indexed at a minimum. Because what we're seeing here, even good councils like Waila who've been indexing, I think the inflation effect of that industry is higher than what the CPI increases were unfortunately. And, and even higher than, there is a debate in the sector between CPI and LGPI as well, to let, to let the, with the committee know. But that's sort of close to each other, so it's better of indexing one or, or the other. It doesn't matter, doesn't worry me too much, I like CPI, but that's my personal choice. But all it means is that there are councils that just didn't index, right? So now they've come to a big, big problem, right? So they've got a, they've got an asset base that's gone up by X. They're down here, when they put that new number into their vows and some orders are forcing them to do that, they're getting a massive depreciation number and a big operating deficit that particularly year. And I'm talking sometimes double digit more stuff coming through, right? And that's a problem, right? So that's what concerns me as a banker is when I, you know, look at the numbers and I come through and say, you've made, you've technically made a loss last year. And then it's about the negotiations about how do you catch this? How do you catch this up? What's your plan to get back into the black? And so we'll talk about that. So this is, so how to fund ourselves, Pat, we want to be a responsible lender. A lot changed since two thousand and nineteen, when the Bank Royal Commission happened. You can no longer be a lender and just go, I've got security, doesn't matter about the income side. Now, I think, we're not regulated by APRA, we don't have to have a FSL licensing and so forth. But we try and, where possible, follow APRA's advice, which is only prudent to do so. So for us, we, we say basically that we're a responsible lender, so we, we should be doing our due diligence to make sure that we think that that council can repay back the money to us as well. And we've found the best way to do that is to use all the stuff that you are already producing anyway, the long term financial plan, and look at those key ratios. Is what we use as a banker to work out whether we think you're financially sustainable or not.
Are there other ratios you're looking at that this council's not looking at?
Not at all, no, we, we, we look at, there's one other, it's called debt to income. So, and the net financial liabilities also includes lease liabilities. We, we understand why that logic is there, but for us, we're still worried about debt. Like debt to income is one that we look at, because we think it's still important to know that. Because what happens if you do see, to sometimes grind, is you see some people who go, who've got, who've got some clever accounting and they maybe is reducing their net financial liabilities by taking out some, you know, forward dated sale of something that they've already got. But to us, the exposure to us is the debt to income, because that's where we are right at that point in time. Because we, we, we probably have ninety eight to ninety nine percent of the loans to the sector. So those ratios are our debt usually, and we have about ninety percent of the deposit for the sector. So we're very well used by the sector and, and you should well respect this. So we focus on sustainability, just like we recommend that audit and risk committees do as well. And look, and Justin's probably told you this too, like I, I know some very well, good functioning audit and risk committees that provide advice to their councils that is sometimes ignored as well, right? But I think, one thing, one suggestion I make to, to especially new audit and risk people is, you know, be, you know, be strong and, and put those recommendations out. That if you think it's unsustainable or the head towards unsustainable, you know, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to call the spade a spade. And sometimes, and that can help Justin and Grant to say sometimes, look, you know, our audit and risk committee is pushing our recommendations here that, you know, and I, and I do like to bait. When we read, we read through audit and risk committee minutes from time to time when we, when we're doing our assessment of a council. And we do like it when there's debate in that audit and risk committee, you know, don't just take those recommendations from the administration, you know, work through on it. If you don't think it quite fits for you, feel, feel comfortable, I would say to, I'm not just trying to create a hard work here for Justin, but I think it's helpful with Justin in some ways to give, to give advice that it reinforces that a council may be heading towards unsustainable or having issues in particular areas.
I don't know if you've read our minutes, but if you have, are you comfortable with what you're seeing from the committee?
I haven't had a chance to be honest with you. Where we, we go through a programme, we are, at the moment, every two years, we try and get through a council, we're trying to increase that to every year. So we're trying to create a real database of, of learnings about each of the councils. We were pretty, I came from a pretty low base when I took over as CEO in two thousand and twenty, we didn't have a lot of that information. So we're starting to develop that, so I'm not having a section of yours, but all I'm saying is that, you know, document your discussions, not, no, not on the top, but if you've had some discussion, document it about what you, differing things that you saw. And if you've changed the recommendation, you know, I would say, comment on that as well.
To me, if, if that does eventuate, that you do review it, we'd just like that feedback loop.
Yeah, sure, I got it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sure. And so.
What I can say is, I've been in this like a government for twenty plus years and this is one of the more robust and thorough audit committees that have been involved.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I think, I think you'll find that the, the debate and the feedback from the audit and risk committee is, without figure of favour, is absolutely challenging.
Right.
Terrific, really, from a, you know, from a, an administration point, we value it because it challenges us in our decision making.
Yep.
And it provides great advice to the council.
Agreed.
Which is as it should be.
And that's right, and that's why they're trying to push that more independent element into that, through the new changes to the actual local government legislation recently. So I'm fully supportive of that. I think the more independence you have on the audit risk, the better.
Yeah.
You know, to a point, you know, you've got to still have member, elected members because it's still part of the, of the machine. But I still think that it's really good to have independence. So, yeah, what, what we don't like when we go through audit and risk committee minutes is you're saying, I just moved seconded, you know, moved seconded. And you're like, well, where was the debate then? Where was the challenging of, of the recommendations? And, and are they providing enough of that oversight too? Let's just be honest, you know, there's some elected members here on the call, but some people may not have the skill set that, that Justin and Grant have, for example. So, so we, so, so it should be, so we focus on sustainability, just like the councils should and do. And these are the, and these are the key financial ratios that we also focus on. This is not new, we tried to couple with the LGA literature as well, so we're not reinventing a new process. So it's operating surplus, and it isn't, it isn't that order for a particular reason. I think the operating surplus ratio is the most important ratio of the three. If you're not break even operating surplus, you have got issues. And especially if it's over a longer timeframe. It can have an operating deficit for a couple of years, two, three, four years possibly. But if you have a, and we have, and we are, I'm not trying to scare you guys, but we are given plans, sometimes with an operating deficit through, a whole way through the plan. And I'm actively writing back to some of those now and going, well, we might be here for you. And none of those exact words, but we, you know, we, we, we will not be there for you if you want to come and borrow money unless you change this plan and get yourself into an operating surplus by, you know, year four, five at the, at a minimum. So operating surplus ratio is really important. Net financial liabilities ratio, now that LGA recommends a target range between zero and a hundred percent, which is a bit, a bit of a, bit of a wide range. But as part, I think that's the reason for that is to say, depends very much on the type of council that you are actually involved with here. I, I know that it says zero to a hundred percent, but I think some small regionals who are not growing, for example, you shouldn't have a, a net financial liabilities big ones, sort of fifty percent is my personal view. That's not written in any literature, but that's my personal view. A council like Playford or Mount Barker, for example, could be well over a hundred percent net financial liabilities because they've got growth. They've got to provide the infrastructure to their community before the actual developers come through and sell that land and, and realize the actual extra income from those properties that come through. So that's why I think net financial liabilities is a bit of an interesting one. Your net front, no, yeah, your net financial liabilities we'll have a look at, but I think they're reasonable and what we see predicted is reasonable. Justin has had some chats to me in the past about, you know, could that, you know, if we were really stuck in a spot, could that be elevated for a period of time considering the unique situation of Waila, considering where you're at, considering the hub and stuff that's going to be up your way? We can discuss that, but it's very much about the income side that we're interested in, that how that works. I said, and this is different to a bank, may not really focus on this, but we do is asset renewal funding ratio. We want to know, because we've seen it in the past, that you're keeping up your asset renewal. Because one way to rob Peter to pay Paul, as you, as you probably have seen, is that you need to degradate current assets to build all the whole of the new stuff. And then you'll be in trouble later on because you've actually had to, you actually kind of have to renew it, renew those assets in the, in the future. So we say, we were, if we, if we were focused on anything, we want to see the asset funding, asset renewed funding ratio greater than seventy five percent at a minimum. And, and if there's not, just the plans about why it's not being done. And look, COVID was tough times, people just couldn't get contractors and so forth to actually do the work and that was part of the problem. And then I'd say also that we focus on the long, long term financial plan, okay? That's probably a key document for us, with our bankers in, in essence. And so we want to, we're not just backward looking, we're also forward looking. We want to know about your projections, how you're looking, what are the assumptions in the long term financial plan? You know, and, and we hope that the long term financial has key projects in there that are already committed to by the council.
Do you stress it independently too?
We, we don't stress it, but we are starting to do our own analysis on it. We will stress it from time to time when we need to for certain tasks. But we usually, we are looking more and more into almost, not reverse engineering, but doing our own sanity checks on to make sure that there's a valid document. But to date, it's more being, we don't stress test it to anything in particular. We, there are circumstances, I've asked Mount Barker, for example, who you may have read in the press, we just approved a ninety seven million dollar lend to them for their wastewater business. I made them stress some of their scenarios and give me a, a theoretical plan where, where their growth levels were lower. And as I said to them, well, how could you, sorry, is a rubbish word, pivot your business if you had to, if the growth didn't happen like you thought it would. Slightly different for Waila, because it's a lot, a little bit more vanilla. So we don't stress tests at such, but we take the plan, we look at it, make sure that you're showing the sustainability, which is focused on those key ratios through the plan. And we focus a lot of our time on the key ratios because on a relative term is better than just dollar figures. And then we do, I've stressed to all, and I've already stressed it already, which is good, is that, I mean, up to date, asset management plans evaluations is critical because you're an infrastructure intense business. So you've got, you've got, if you've got, if you've got, you know, rubbish in, rubbish out, as we know with data, if you've got bad, bad numbers in those, in those long term financial plans, you could be unsustainable or not even know it, you know, because of those vows aren't up to date. And I think that's why, who's doing your it these days? Justin's over the group. Yeah, so we've seen some other ones like Goutens that are really pushing some of those councils who've left too long, saying, we will qualify you if you don't update, update your vows.
Yeah, I think it was a council did a doctor in February last year, their financials, because they were trying to get their rebows done.
Yeah, so you might see that, so you might hear that from orders, which is good, because they're doing their job if that's the case. So it would always be good to, to update those plans.
I've got a sort of a reluctance to ask this, but, you know, a lot of the evaluations are done based on industry averages.
Yep.
In infrastructure, in region now, it's bloody expensive. We're looking at thirty to forty percent like heavily loadings.
Yep.
I don't know how the sector's potentially responding to that, because the evaluations in rural and regional areas should be much, much larger than what the industry average figures are.
Sure.
They still use them, IPYA figures as their, the red book figures for some of their evaluations.
Yeah, the buildings are probably the one where you have the biggest struggle in that space. For most of that infrastructure, it'll be a comparison between the industry rates and your experienced, you know, rates are the ones you're actually getting in contract, so you can, can actually test them. Buildings, because of the nature of buildings, is a bit harder and they tend to rely a bit more on the, you know, the, the red books, the book values that are coming out. So that's the area that probably potentially is undervalued if anything in regional areas. I think infrastructure is not too bad.
Yeah. So, yeah, but I know it's coming from Justin because that would unfortunately be a bigger impulse for you guys already on top of your already impulse of being in the regions is, if you had to add that loading and just be high depreciation charge, which would be tougher for your bottom line already. So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you, but just, you know, the fact that, you know, being up to date, even with the, even if it is the statewide averages, Justin, better than not being up to that at all, you know? At least you're being a better reflection of where your true costs are likely to be if you had to replace that asset. So this is what, that's what, this is what sustainability is for us, with the same things that are in the LGA literature, that we, we, we know and hope that audit and risk committees are looking at. So just to let you know how that fits in there. And, and what does LGFA look at when we assess a credit application? Well, we, you know, it was a normal question of any banker, that should be since the Royal Commission, it's not just about the security, is that can the entity repay their borrowings over time? Okay, and so we'll show, look at some of your graphs later on, I think you show that in some of your planning. But what unfortunately happens is it is a J curve at quite a lot of time or, or, or what happens in the sector is that people just keep moving it along. They, they say they're going to repay in the debt and they just keep moving it a year along. But I, but I do, but I do feel comfortable with that sometimes because then, you know, that capacity is freed up to look at new projects that the community may want, may want to do or to allow for growth over time as well. But what we do is see is that people say they're going to repay, but if you went back and back tested that, we probably unlikely that you would see that full repayment as per the plan. Because new things get thrown into the equation. And unfortunately, I do speak to people at Scosa and the OLG about this a lot, is that there is, you know, I feel there's a problem with the way that, that the Fed's and the state fund, especially regional South Strang, by throwing money in for particular projects, it'd be so much better if it was more in the FA grants, just for untied grants. So you guys, you could do whatever you wanted to do with it. But instead, you've got to build something, which just adds to the load of your asset base, which just adds to your depreciation over time. And so I think it's a fundamental issue, but politicians are politicians and that's hard to change.
Do, do you do a shadow credit rating?
Well, we do shadow credit rate our councils as well.
You do share that?
We don't share that, we try and keep that, because we don't want to become another Scosa, to keep for ourselves. But to let you know, granted, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't change your pricing. We've got homogenous pricing at the moment. We do have the ability to differentially price, I have put that through my board and so forth. But at the moment, we don't really want to do that unless we are forced to do that. So we keep it as a homogenous pricing. So we have a shadow credit rating, which drives an ROE model, which drives, you know, my traditional behaviour that I knew when I was younger. But at the moment, it's more for, just for informational purposes, just to make sure. It's like, you know, even our toughest client in the state, which is competitive council, they're, they're, they're a hundred percent risk weighted debt for us. They're, they're the lowest rating that we've got because of the factors that are up there. They still, they still borderline break our ROE hurdle targets, so to let you know. So we don't have any pressure on that side. Our pricing is competitive, but our cost of funds is cheap as well. So we're pretty lucky in the way that we've been, the way we've been set up. And don't worry, I'm having discussions with my board, I feel we should be even tightening pricing more aggressively. And I'm fighting with my board, not fighting with them, but trying to get the heads around it at the moment. I think we should be giving the best deal we possibly can to councils. So it's a no brainer, they don't even want to go and speak to the banks, is what I like to do.
So have you got a lazy balance sheet or?
I, I think a bit personally, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. I've come in from a more private sector mindset with Jamie and, and Pauline and those guys when I was younger, I used to watch those guys and they were very much lowest levels of capital as possible.
Yep.
I don't want to, I don't want to give our capital, because we've got about, basically about seventy eight million dollars worth of capital at the moment. And when we do just APRA ratios, we, we're running at about a twenty four percent capital ratio, which is just way too high. And I'd love to get rid of that lazy capital, but I don't want to throw it away because we have, we can only grow our capital base organically as well. So I just want to make sure that we do it, a good way to do it is just do it organically over time by reducing margins and just dropping those down just a bit over time and getting better deals to the councils that use us as well. So we look at the same thing, just let you know, when we do, we, when we do a review, when we do a lend to a council, we look at the past operating performance, it's still good to know how the council's tracked over time. Look at your annual report, look at your asset management plans, and as I've spoken about a lot, a lot, we look at your long term financial plans as well, just to see how you're tracking and making a credit assessment in that particular way. So if we keep moving as well, is that, we, as you say here, it's a bit of a, this is a bit of a re, just a rehash as well. And what we're trying to do is, what our, our lending manager is trying to do. And, and what we're trying to do is, what, what our, our lending manager is trying to do is just make an assessment to see if you're sustainable. Um, and, you know, when, when were they, when were they adopted, when were the plans adopted? What the assumption is, are they realistic and accurate? We're doing our own assessment more and more these days. I've got a team of people that, that, that do that for us. Um, so that's what we look at when we lend money.
How, how big is your group?
Uh, we're only, we have got about eight, eight hundred to nine hundred million dollars of loans at any particular point in time.
Number of people?
Uh, that, yeah, so we've only got about, um, eight people, uh, about nine people, you know, groups are small. Um, and a lot of that, I do say that a lot of the risk management that would be required is offset by the fact that we've got those guaranteed facilities with the state. You know, I know that someone like a small credit union of, of that size balance sheet would have a lot more people, because I would have to be doing the, um, uh, the, um, apro regulation, regulatory stuff and I'd have to be doing a lot more to model around liquidity, capital or so forth. We do that at a slow, at a, as, at, at a lower level, but yeah, I think we're, we, we probably do some more people over time, but I just don't want to, um, uh, I think we're still managing relatively well so far. Um, what we have started to do, and it's just a good tool that for, or the order of risk, it's, it's, um, for order of risk committees and for and for Justin and to think about too, is that sometimes when we have a lend that is getting a bit more difficult, where the council is in an operating deficit for a period of time and not scheduled to come out of for a while, we can help the narrative a bit by saying, we'll put covenants on the loan to say, well, we will lend to you. Uh, but you need to follow the long term financial plan that you've adopted. And we will then say, if you don't do it, that we have, we have the option, um, uh, and not the right to actually renegotiate the terms of the deal, which is what happens in the real world, right? And so we would say basically, um, okay, we would link a lend to say, you've got to, if you're in deficit at the moment, you're going to be back into a, a operating surplus by twenty twenty eight, for example. And that means it ties you to the long term financial plan that has been adopted by the council. So you're saying stick with your, stick with your word, stick to your plans and we won't have a problem. And if you do, if you don't, and you don't get back into surplus by the date that you suggested, then we have the option to renegotiate. So we, to let you know, we've got a working example, we, we did this for the first time in twenty twenty one. Um, Mount Gambier Council borrowed a lot of money for a big project and they were in deficit at the time. And we backed them and said, we'll lend you the money, but we want to put covenants on there, you've got to get into surplus by twenty twenty four, twenty five. They, they're done it. Right, and it really helped them, because in the, what happens is, and we were bad cop a couple of times too. Because I remember the media saying, oh, look, we've got to put rates up by three percent over CPI, because LGFA's conditions say that we need to do that. Now, we don't mind that, you know, I don't want to be the bad cop all the time, but, but it does mean if it gives any, any sort of help to a chamber or elected member body, or an audit risk committee, or the administration to help them help the community understand that some things aren't free and you, and you need to pay for them, I think that that's what we'll be used for, you know? So that's what we'll put covenants on, uh, as you're saying, I like to, I won't go through every individual spot, but they're, uh, in reference to a realistic and adopted LTFP, we won't just shove covenants on like the banks do, which is say you must be break even by this date. We will have to be something that, that already adopted, and that's why it's a bit tougher, because we've got to negotiate with the council a bit as well, which is fine, right? We're here for the councils. Um, uh, it does mean that you're doing everything, you know, you, you do the best you can. And we've had people where they haven't quite got to the covenants and all the others got negotiated with them and said, okay, what are you doing? You've got to do this better, you've got to speak to your elected member body about increasing rates or decreasing. So, well, I think now we'll go into a bit more detail about Waila, my team helped me put this together as well at my moment. This is a, just a snapshot, all green is good, meaning basically this is a, a part of our credit lending policy. These are the things that we, we look at, so your net financial liabilities, including the new lenders, less than a hundred and twenty percent. Debt to income is the ratio that I said we do look at, that's different to the other ones, net financial liabilities. This is different for us, net financial, and net interest versus total operating income and the operating margin. So you've got a slight deficit in the year that we looked at there as well, which one I remember a couple of years ago. And last year. Yeah, so this is, this is what we look at, even if you do break some of these and they, and they turn red. For example, we can still get the boards to approve it, but it might have special conditions or it might have some other conditions. But we have said no to councils before to let you know, too, we, we don't dislike everybody. Um, definitely not letting to keep any in a hurry, for example. Um, others would just say, no, we're not, we can't lend to that, uh, for that situation. We can lend a lower amount or a, or shorter term to give us more comfort. Um, if we go here, this is just some of your key ratios over the last few years. Um, as you can see there, um, the council has been in deficit. And the adjusted, and we look at the adjusted operating surplus. Uh, we don't look at the operating surplus ratio, we, we want to see what it looks like without those one offs included. Um, you can see your, your adjusted net financial liabilities is reasonable, we're only about fifty percent net financial liabilities. And your asset renewal funding ratio is a little bit of a problem, you've got some areas there where you were a bit lower below that sort of seventy five percent that I talk about, but I know that twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two were affected by COVID, right? So we give people a bit of a free, a bit of a break there, because you just couldn't get contractors to do the work. Um, so that's what we look at too, this is some information historical that you, you're probably all aware of. Um, this is a snapshot of, um, of Waila Council on the twenty sixth of September, only a few days ago. You had cash advanced, the venture's drawn down by thirteen point four mil and you had twelve point six mil available. And we seem to think you have enough in current borrowing limits to get you through the twenty three, sorry, twenty four, twenty five and your business plan as per your requirements. So you don't need to come to us. So we're quite liberal in the sense compared to other banks, we open up quite longer term facilities for people. Um, they are a mixture of capital and cash flow lend, it's, it's unusual, I didn't see it before I came into the sector. So, um, grants these ten, they can borrow from us for capital projects and for their just normal cash flow requirements in the same facility, okay? Um, and that's why you need good governance controls around it too, especially what I'll say to, um, to order risk committee. If you see the council just going through budget review cycles and increasing their scope and spending, it does, as, as you would know, it doesn't come from that, it doesn't come from nowhere, you, you, you need to re-rate the community at some point in time. Just because you're just improving expenditure in the budget review cycles, it's not a free kick. And some councils seem to think that at the moment, which is what I don't like, is I see they adopt the balanced budget and then through BR one, BR two, BR three, they go deficit, 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 deficit. It's like, well, that's, that's crazy. Like, you know, you, if you, if you want to spend more money, at some point you're going to have to re-rate the community, okay, is what I say. Or look at your expenditure and reduce expenditure, so there's no free lunch. And, and that's what I wanted to point out, that as a good tip is if you see the council just constantly in the BR cycles, budget review cycles, just putting extra expenditure in, just pipe up about it, is what I would say. Um, and.
Just on that, are you looking at having this presented to council, this presentation? Because you, you are putting into the converted here.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
And, and, but I think there is great value in actually the message for the council itself.
We presented probably half the councils in the state already, so we, we welcome at our cost, we're happy to fly over.
I'd recommend that to the, because I think this is the message to council. This is why the audit committee and this committee are doing what they're doing.
Yeah.
And that, because of this.
Agreed, and I do, I must admit, I've only presented to probably five to ten audit risk committees, I present a lot more to the councils. Because this is where you're at, this is where it's home, is because this is the messaging and it's good because for Justin and administration, because it's like this is a person who, who's lending to you, okay? And, and we're not going to be, we're not, we're not the stick people or the carrot people, but we just want to know that, you know, if, unfortunately, if you get to points where you're not sustainable, we're going to struggle to lend to you. And, and that's where we have, we have to say that. Um, and so, um, yeah, no, we're, a good point, and, and we'd, and we'd love, and we'd love to present to the council if, if Justin would like us to. Um, what we see here too is that, um, unlike in the private sector too, um, people will, um, uh, you, you're not forced to go into any fix or floating. Um, but what we do say as a treasury management policy of the council should, should dictate that you have a mixture of fix and floating debt. So you don't get caught with inflation spikes and, and interest rate spikes as well.
Are you providing treasury advice then to these guys?
Provide advice, we provide general advice and the fact that what we do is we, um, uh, we, we provide advice on the policies. So we're, we're happy to comment on the policies, we provide indicative rates for our portal every, every week. So there's new rates on there every week for people to digest. Um, we start the advice part, part to be honest with you. But we think, I know, we think personally, if you've just got to blend a fix and floating, you've got to ride through most things. Don't go all fixed, don't go all flowing, because what we saw pre, pre GFC, pre COVID, so people locking in as fixed rates at eight, seven, eight percent, and then they had to hold them all the way through there till they got to, until they paid them off. And that's why I think, but I saw people with the CAD loans, which are a variable rate product. Um, they did really well, but then they've got hit on the way back up lately, because they, they didn't fix any at the bottom. Okay, and so no, it's not trying to pick the bottom, I mean, yeah, and I'm not, I'm a, I used to look after liquidity book at Bendigo Adelaide Bank for a while, so I know a fair bit about interest rates. Um, and I watch them every day, because it's just, you know, become a geek and, and enjoy it. But it's more about the fact that, um, you know, even then, you know, it's about having a balanced portfolio, just like your own, um, share portfolio. And it's, and that's why, yeah, and this is probably a good thing to say to the councillors as well, because sometimes I see councillors in the chamber finding out interest rates and whether they should lock in or not. And what I say to them then is get a treasury management policy and, and put faith in your administration to lock in strategically when they need to, um, and we can give general advice to the council about when the reasonable times to lock in and so forth. Um, so, uh, so if we think you've got existing, existing amount of, uh, police to do this, and you've got a mixture of fixed and floating, that's great, perfect. Um, the, the finance team are doing a good job at the moment, because we see people who are fully floating and they've been really hurt since the RBA with their harsh hand, brought rates by four percent over the last, um, last couple of years. Um, if we keep moving now, I think we're almost towards the end of the presentation, but, um, yeah, this is just a snapshot of, um, variations from the, I talked about earlier, is that, um, uh, basically your adjusted operating deficit increased by one point two percent, um, from two and a half to three point seven. Um, and, uh, and, and these are the, these are the reasons for the increases, the increased waste costs and stuff that were hard to actually, um, avoid basically. Uh, but we do look at that as well, um, uh, where you work compared to your budget to where you're actually finishing as well. And, and that's where you, what you'll predict as well, but you've already said all the financials, you had your order received today as well, you're.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
You're past that point. Um, we'll move on, this, these are, these are some of your ratios. Obviously, we, you know, there, there's a concern here, um, with operating surplus being a minus four. But, you know, there's a plan by twenty twenty nine to keep it even, okay, so, you know, it's all we say, you've been in deficit for three to four years. Then this is where the council is, it definitely has, it's definitely got a challenge and, and, um, and Justin knows that as well. But you see here that, that this is what you're looking at via, via adopted long term financial plan. Um, and, uh, we go here to next slide. Uh, but you haven't got high level, you haven't got high levels of debt, and as I was saying there before, most councils, you'll see this downward, this downward slope there, we're going to repay the debt over time. But if you back test it, it probably doesn't work that way, because then they find new projects to probably borrow for over time as well. So that's not unusual, that's a good sign that you, you look like you're going to repay debt. And this is what we like to see here, is that the asset renewal funding ratio is showing at least a hundred percent. There's a small bit there on twenty twenty five, but that's not the end of the world, but you can go asset renewal, because we've seen councils that don't renew assets and then come back to us and need to borrow a lot of money to get their assets up to where they need to be over time. Um, we've got the next slide, I think we're almost towards the end too. Treasury management, all we're saying here is leave the treasury management where you can in, in the hands of the administration. Don't try and bring it into the chamber, it gets too bloody difficult. Everyone's going to opinion on rates, some of us, some of us good and some of us bad. Give the best mixture of float, fix and floating products, products is what we suggest to everybody. Um, and we're on the next slide here. These are our current interest rates, as you can see, our CAD rate, which I keep talking about, is a cash advanced adventure, is a variable rate, come and go product. Probably a little bit higher margin than our fixed rates, because it's just the variability and so forth causes us, need a little bit more margin. But you can see here, obviously you can see where the, where the interest rate markets are thinking that, um, the, the fixed rates are, are lower than the variable rate at the moment, because there is what they call an inverse curve happening. Basically, everyone thinks a reserve bank will probably cut by a percent next year, so.
Does your CAD rate float daily?
Uh, floats, yes, linked to that, and, and we can move out of cycle, but it's essentially tied to the RBA cash rate.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we.
Not a wire or a W.
But you can fix, rather than doing the credit frontier, we can also fix a portion of the CAD rate, and that's how we do our fixing. Um, so it's just, it's a principal only fix, um, and they quote rates separate for that every day.
It's a fixed rate, so the fixed rate interest is only a little bit higher than the amortising, just because of the structure of the swap that goes along with it. Uh, so.
I think the three is the lowest at the moment.
Yes, it's a little bit lower. So we're seeing some councils strategically just blocking a little bit away, like grants we're doing from time to time in fixed rates inside the CAD facility itself, so it's quite a good product that you can actually fix inside the facility itself, uh, which we recommend. Um, but I, I mean, I don't want to go too long today, I know you've got, you've had a pretty long meeting, there's some more information, um, which is on our website about responsible use of debt and other, other questions about debt. Probably more, more leaning towards the councillors themselves. Um, and, um, yeah, if, if there's any questions that haven't been asked on the, um, adjutant presentation, I'm happy to answer them now.
Laurie, anything from you?
No, other than to say thanks, it's been a great presentation and, uh, it'd be good to get your perspective as to how you're, you're looking at it and how we should be thinking about the key priorities, so I just wanted to say thanks.
So, Laurie, thanks for the feedback.
Peter?
Yeah, nothing further from me, thanks, thanks for the presentation, it was great.
Thanks, Peter.
Pat? Yeah, uh, that, that was good, I think it does round out and it reaffirms the direction and focus and the priority we're pushing back on, management.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I would encourage management to consider the presentation to council.
Yes.
And potentially when we're there as well, because I think you, you, you're reaffirming a position and you've got the participants in the room as well as part of that, so.
Yeah.
And we'd be very happy for any feedback ongoing.
Yes.
And keep that dialogue going, I know the relationship is here, here.
Yes.
We do enjoy that relationship broadening to the Audit Risk Committee as well.
Yeah, no, thanks, it's good, and like, we, we are trying to, to push the word of sustainability through the sector as much as we can, because it's really important, right, you know, if we're not, if we're not paying the bills, you're only going to leave a legacy to, 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 um, our, our younger citizens of South Australia, our kids and so forth, and that's what sometimes hits home when you, when you, when you're speaking to a chamber, is that, you know, if you don't get this right, you could be passing a legacy, a bad legacy on to your kids. I try to scare them, but saying, hey, look, we've got to pay our way, you know, they're going to pay for it.
The argument should be, you should be in the best balance sheet position now.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So there's, there's a bit of leverage, what has been built from the past, but we're not seeing that, and that's part of the issue we've got, that's legacy sitting in there. So thank you again.
Thank you, much appreciated. Appreciate it, thanks, have a good rest of the, rest of your session.
Cheers.
It's, it's happening, thanks.
All right, um, okay, we'll reopen the meetings, so do I need to move in second? No, we're back in, uh, we'll go to item, we're back being taped.
Oh yeah, that was recorded anyway, that's all.
Okay, um, we'll go to item two point five. We have the meeting scheduled for next year on page. One fifty two. Just let me get back. Okay, we've got the meeting schedule, um, there, I, I just note the recommendation that's at the civic building.
Yes.
We just need, we'll just change that to, to add later, noting that that October one is.
Yep, yep, we'll.
Is, is in Waila, so if you can just amend.
Yeah.
Get that wording right.
We'll have the wording of the combination of the meeting, it's actually, so that it is actually the civic building, um, where the meeting is being held, so members of the public can go in there.
Okay.
Um, uh, but we will add that, uh, the team.
Yep, we get that piece there, and we're sitting outside of any, um, long weekends as well, which is good. There you go.
Well, not issues, but, uh, Monday the tenth of February, I'll be in Perth, I can probably attend by team, so.
That one's probably the easiest one to move out of.
Monday the thirteenth of. It is okay, but I've got a pre-scheduled full planning day on the fourteenth, it starts at eight thirty. So I'm not sure what time the flights are, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't get back.
Okay, so that one definitely is going to be, have to be changed.
Well, um, unless I miss the evening and go back on a night, um, well, I don't know what the half time flies, but that was basically the workshop.
Hmm, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, the other option is to make that Friday rather than a Monday.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be held on.
On a Monday, it could be like the middle of the week before or.
The week or.
Can, can we not approve that and just note that there is an issue? Laurie, are you okay with the dates?
Uh, I, I just firstly, I prefer to. Uh, I, I just firstly, I prefer to say, yeah, Fridays are better, are better for me than Mondays.
Yeah.
First day of the week, but, um, otherwise I'm good with the dates going through with the exception of the one in July. But, um, I'm going to be in Europe for that month, so, um, I'd, I'd rather be dialing you and not taking the lead for that particular meeting.
Okay, let's, let's, let's take, yeah, let's take this one offline then.
Yep.
Um, and just issue if the, I, I, I prefer a Friday or Tuesday personally.
Okay. Um, can, can we perhaps adjourn this item?
Yeah.
And, um, and we'll bring it back to.
November.
November.
Or do a vice secular resolution.
Circular resolution, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll note that.
Yeah. Second it to adjourn the item.
And second, thanks Laurie, thanks Peter. Everybody's happy with that. All right, we'll now move into agenda item two point nine. The report and that is on page one ninety five. Kathy, did you want to talk to that or Justin, did you want to talk to that?
Um, I, I have it taken as, as read. It's a summary of the activities of the committee through the past twelve months. We're highlighting, um, the expressions of concern that the committee has made during the course of the year in terms of. The development of financial strategies, et cetera. Um, I think that it's a, a fair representation. And I'm happy to finalize it with the chair of the committee if that's what the committee resolves.
Yeah, for, for, uh, and I'll, I'll lady and then open it up. I think. Will the committee see the performance review of the council, of the, sorry, will the council receive the performance review of the committee?
Uh, yes.
They will.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if it's worthwhile actually attaching that to this report.
Yep.
And just having a section after work program called committee performance review. Saying that the, uh, committee appears to be, uh, working appropriately and that key themes will be extracted out of the performance review.
Easily done.
Easily done. We're comfortable with that because I think that's a good snapshot from us. Uh, and just on the, uh, work program for twenty four twenty five, I think first stop point is realisation of the benefits from the twenty three twenty four service reviews. So. Rather than just launching into new reviews, it's actually getting traction out of work we've already done. So, um, and I've got just some other minor, I suppose enhancements from the point of view of pushing that sustainability.
Yep.
And the, um, the need to look, uh, at the airport inclusive of all counter activities rather than sitting outside. So I think that would sit within the delegation that's been given and I finalize that report with, um, management. So I'll go to Pat.
I'm okay with it. I mean, it did remind me that, um, where we're at with the civic building. Process. So it's another one of those things that come to us and then. Far as I know, nothing much has happened, but there may well be stuff that's happened.
Yep.
Um.
All right.
And so not quite, it's not an issue with the report itself. It's just.
How they continue to join and, and get focused and priority. Yep. Pete?
Yeah, nothing further. Thanks, Grant.
Laurie?
All right, happy with, with the content and, uh, as you said, Kathy, that finalized it through the chair.
Okay, so we've got the resolution on page one ninety five. Can I have a mover? Thanks Laurie, second at Pete. All those in favour? Okay, that's approved. All right, um, we will now go into confidence to deal with. Agenda item four point one. Can I have a mover to go into confidence? Thanks Pat, second Laurie, all those in favour? Okay. All right, um, I'm going to go back into resolution to go back in. Thanks Pete, thanks Laurie. Um, any further business? No, we'll close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.